Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls City Council meeting for Tuesday, August fifteenth to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Abidi.
Althoff.
Here.
Carpenter is absent. Dalton.
Here.
Madsen.
Here.
McCusker.
Yeah.
And Mayor Robinson.
Here. All please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the second city council meeting for the month of August. At this time, the chair will take a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by John. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carries. That moves us on to item five this evening, public input. Citizens may speak to items not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to address the council under public input this evening? Seeing as there are no one that wishes to address us, we will move on to the consent agenda. Items of this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For the folks at home, I'll read the consent agenda. Item A is the just and correct claims for the accounting period ending August the tenth, two thousand seventeen. Item B are the meeting minutes for the August first, two thousand seventeen city council meeting. And item C is approve one to four day temporary on sale liquor license for the Cannon Valley Fair Board. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down?
A.
A. Item A will become item seven B. Any other items? With the exception of item A then, the chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Cedar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carries. That moves us on to the council business this evening, which is resolution twenty-two ninety-one, authorizing Semtra to move forward the Sandstone Ridge development plan. And Ron?
Thank you. You may recall a few months ago, we established, or council established, an ad hoc committee to look into the Sandstone Ridge development. The proposal submitted by the Southeast Minnesota multi-county HRA. And over time, we finally got to meet last week. Joe Wheeler, executive director of the HRA, or Semtra. Scott Arneson, county administrator, and Mayor Robinson, and council members Abidi and Althoff were present, as was I. And so the project was discussed, and at the end of the discussion, the committee did recommend to put this on the agenda for tonight for adoption of the resolution for the HRA to proceed. And Mr. Wheeler is here. And maybe you want to give a two-minute overview of the project, or... The project would be in two, at least two phases, a minimum of two phases. The first phase being a thirty-six unit multifamily housing project. And I'll let you take it from there, Joe.
Okay. That's correct. I, with the Housing Authority, assuming the council adopts this resolution today, the next step for the authority would be to go in front of the Goodyear County Board and actually get the tax forfeited property transferred over to Southeast Minnesota HRA. We have it broke down, and I think all you guys have seen this redevelopment plan along with the study that was done by Stan Tech about, I'm going to say about a year, a little over a year ago now. That Stan Tech actually did analysis of the entire site and then came back with some recommendations of possibilities of how it might be developed. The, we broke it into actually two sections, east and west end. The east end of the development is along twenty-five, County Road twenty-five. That seems to be the simplest and easiest area to start. Again, as Ron indicated, we're looking at up to thirty-six units. Either workforce housing and/or elderly could go there. It's about, I'm going to say, based on the study that was done by Stan Tech, we've got a soil correction of about a hundred thousand, but we need to do some additional investigation in the area, which would look at sewer and water that's currently out there now that would be investigated. And we've got money set aside for that. So those are things that would be looked at, and then some additional soil borings. Our plan is to move forward rather quickly and actually put out a request for a proposal to for-profit and nonprofit developers and see if we can get somebody at the table that's interested in moving ahead with a project. Assuming we get interest in them, we'll work with, we'll obviously report here to the city council of what our findings was with those proposals and what our recommendation is going to be to move forward with a particular developer. And that kind of begins the process. I can tell you that it will be a long process. It's not going to happen overnight. If tax credits are involved, that's kind of the unknown right now because under the current administration, tax credits have went down for, they were about a dollar. We're paying out about a dollar ten for every dollar credited. And since when this administration came in, just out of speculation that the tax code may change, that's already dropped down to eighty-five cents. So that's kind of the unknown right now. But it's one resource of many that are out there to try to accomplish the deal. I can also tell you that we've been working with Goodyear County. Goodyear County is paying close attention to what's been happening around the county. They've been hearing a lot from employers that they cannot expand their businesses due to lack of workers. And affordable housing is all part of that. So we actually have been working with the county, and they wanted us to propose a maximum levy broken into like three different parts. And so that could be a part of this, but again, I have one of the county commissioners, Jason Majuris from Lake City on the board, and he says, you know, we love to talk, but we'll see what happens when we do the walk. So we're in front of a budget committee on Wednesday, and then there'll be a recommendation coming out from that budget committee for our levy request, which will happen sometime yet this month. Levy requests have to be, and we're similar to you guys, where they have to be into the state by the fifteenth of September, I believe, is the date. So that's kind of the game plan. I know a lot of people were nervous about, well, where is Cannon Falls going to be in and all this? I assured the committee that any asks that are made are just ask. You guys control the bus because even once we get the land, we still have to go through planning and zoning in the city to move anything forward. So again, if any of you ever have any questions about anything that we're doing, you're welcome to call me. Again, we'll report back to Cannon Falls on a regular basis as we kind of move the project forward, so.
And the biggest thing about this is this property's been sitting out there with, off the tax rolls for years. And so I think by moving this forward, it's a way to possibly get it back on the tax rolls, besides just sitting there deteriorating even worse. So...
I just want to point out too that this is only, this is only a resolution to have Joe and his group move forward. We're not being, I mean, this isn't binding the city to anything. This isn't saying, yes, we agree with what they're doing. No, we don't. This is just giving them the opportunity to continue with their exploration.
You know, just a couple of things on your stuff there is that, first of all, just so you people know, we really appreciate your efforts into this. This is talking about a mess out there that we're trying to make chicken salad out of this instead of what it was before. So we really appreciate your efforts. The one thing that as a council member that I sit here and hopefully you guys maintain that word, affordable, because that's one thing we need around Cannon Falls is affordable housing. And I think that's a big thing for you guys to keep in mind out there. Thank you.
Thank you for the compliment.
Anybody else?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I have a second. I have a motion by Mike and a second by Morris to approve resolution twenty-two ninety-one, authorizing Semtra to move forward with the redevelopment plan for the Sandstone Ridge redevelopment in Cannon Falls. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Resolution's approved.
Thank you. I'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
All right. That moves us to item seven B, which was pulled down from the consent agenda. And John, you were the just and correct claims?
I just have one question. I look through this fund charts every month, and US Bank comes up. It must be a city credit card. Do all the department heads have credit cards? How does that work?
No?
Look at libraries, like, I don't have one.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah, that is a city credit card, and I believe most of the department heads have them. Maybe Nicole hasn't, but that's something we can get her if she's interested. But I think most of the department heads have it, and some do use it. We use it for various purposes. A lot of times for travel and training, registration for online trainings, seminars, and other purchases.
Do we have a written credit card use policy, I'm sure?
Yes, we do.
Perfect.
Well, I see it used for a lot of out-of-town buying. I guess I'd like to see a lot of the purchasing, more of it done in the city, too. So if that helps the situation, I don't know. That's what I was kind of curious about anyhow.
Of course, if it's used for travel, that wouldn't...
That wouldn't matter, but...
Okay.
Okay, I'll take a motion to, if there's no further discussion, we'll take a motion to approve the just and correct claims for the accounting period ending August the tenth, two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Cedar, second by Mike. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carries. That moves us on to reports this evening. We'll start with Dave. Since we got them all here, we'll catch them all tonight.
Just a brief update.
You don't know.
It appears at this point that the application for the TED grant will be submitted to the council for your review and decision to proceed or not on September fifth. That application is due the fifteenth of September, but there's obviously not a council meeting after the fifth, before the fifteenth, so we'll try to do that. SRF continues to work with MinDOT and myself on generating cost estimates for the project and really begin to put the formal language onto the application itself to respond to the TED criteria. I continue to work with various property owners and development groups around the community talking about economic development and the overpass bridge proposal. That's coming along, I think, pretty well at this point, so we'll hopefully have an application for your review on September fifteenth.
Thanks. Greg? Tom?
I'm just finishing up the Minnesota Wellhead Report. It's been a long, grueling six, seven years to get this thing ready, and now it's ready to go out, just in time to start with the Minnesota DNR water report, which is a twelve-hour process of paperwork. So that's where we're at. Continuing with some patching around town. Hopefully, we'd finish that up in a couple of weeks. Some of the bigger areas, we'll be smearing some asphalt down. We did a couple alleys this last summer, and things are going quite well.
You guys wanted me to come back about six months to discuss the HCMC clinical ride agreement. We've had a couple of people take advantage of that, positive comments from both individuals. And they were speaking so highly of our service, we actually were able to recruit one of their instructors to come down and do, be a volunteer unscheduled paid-on call because she wanted to get back and do more of the rural environment. And she heard that from her students that Cannon Falls was a great service, and so I consider that a big win for us.
I just won't say anything. Planning Commission last night, a few items were on the agenda. They will be coming for council review at the first September meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, for the police department, the good news is we're almost to the end of summer. So most of our summer events are over. We do have coming up the first Thursday in September. So remind people that there'll be some road closures on Mill Street that evening on Thursday. Other than that, we're just looking forward to school starting up again. In a few weeks, we're going to have to start worrying about kids going to school and people getting used to seeing them at certain times of the day rather than just all day long. That's all I have, unless you have anything.
Just a couple of quick things. We have received our thirty thousand dollar payments from MediaCom and HBC for, as per our franchise agreements. And also that we have fiber installed, I believe, in all three of our public facilities as of today. Public Safety, Public Works, and City Hall. It's going to be nice.
Let's see. So a couple items to report on from our Public Works Commission meeting this evening. The first, I'll share this with council. Go ahead and pass them down. We were again visited by representatives of the Canon Arts Board. They are pursuing a grant funding for, to have printed some banners that will hang on Mill Street, both like on the north and, my north, east and west? East and west side before street, but not on fourth. In any event, they anticipate having these banners produced and hung. They would like to use the... They would like to use the light posts in the spring and summer months, especially to take advantage of visibility during Fun Fest and First Thursday. But those banner, those banner light posts would be available for use by public and private entities for the remainder of the year. In any event, what they need from us, or what they requested from us, was funding for an agreement to install suitable hardware that would permit the hanging of these banners. And after some discussion, we determined that hanging them facing inside would be better in terms of overhead hang and cars and whatnot. So, we've determined the safest, most attractive way for them to be hung. And everyone, we were unanimously in favor of having these installed in our downtown light posts. So, we will be proceeding with that.
Is there any discussion to put them down Fourth Street as well as Mill Street?
Well, Fourth Street is a highway, you know, right? So, I think there are some different considerations about what can go on Fourth Street. So, right now, we're going to not lead with the chin. But I think that there is an idea that we would like to pursue that we just know there will be additional hurdles to go through there, right?
Just the one hundred block or actually any of the hundred blocks going north.
Okay.
How does Red Wing get away with it on Highway sixty-one?
Right, I think that that's, yeah. And I know that the Canon Arts Board, again, they're leading the charge, but they don't intend to monopolize this capability once the hardware is installed. But they're envisioning, you know, the Mill Street corridor and then probably the light posts that run along the trail down there, like by the duck pond. Maybe would be another high visibility area where something sort of visually pleasing would mesh with the overall aesthetic. So, that will be something we're pursuing shortly, once we identify the appropriate hardware and make sure our pricing is in line. Another item that we discussed tonight was Mill Street parking. It continues to be on our agenda, of course. It's an item that is of import and interest to many residents and folks here. What we have determined is we are going to try out and test the efficacy of end caps, if you will, on our angled parking. So, we've determined that we're going to put eighteen foot end caps on the angled parking on Mill Street and determine and see how that works, see if compliance works. If the feel of tightness is alleviated by that, we're hoping that it will, if a person's vehicle doesn't fit in that eighteen foot space, that they will say, oh, this spot isn't for me, I'll need to find another spot. So, we want to help direct folks to an appropriate place. And what we talked about today was possibly installing some signage in a very easily recognizable, the blue with white P that people are kind of trained to look for when they're in search of parking and lead them to another and more accessible space for an oversized vehicle, whether that's up the block and around the corner or the like. We're going to identify the right kind of signage and the appropriate locations to direct that kind of traffic and parking to another location. And we're hoping that these efforts together will accomplish an alleviation of that tight feel that is currently experienced on Mill Street. That's all I got.
Okay.
Planning Commission met last night, August fourteenth. As Samantha pointed out, we approved a conditional use permit for the, they're going to move in a, have a fourplex actually on one-one-one-five North Fifth and it'll come up for council approval the next meeting. That's all I got.
Leroy?
Just wanted to announce that we had our library board meeting. And Heidi Helgren, who has been with us for years, who has done a great job and made a great commitment to our library, has retired. And if everybody could just thank her for years of service to Cannon Falls and appreciate what she has done, that would really be great. The other thing is, note for the council and the Public Works is that I hate when my buttons get pushed and boy, they got pushed yesterday. And I waited a day and they still didn't get any better. So, I have to tell the council that I had one of our city employees come to me last winter and didn't feel that they were being treated fair and things were in the right situation. I didn't want to deal with it, I'm not on the personnel committee. So, I didn't quite know what to do with it. So, I had him come and see Mike and Mike's on the personnel committee and asked him to please take care of that and address his person's concerns. I got brought up to me this week that nothing has been done and they approached another council member about it. And I think about the union responsibility here to take care of our employees. I think about our management to take care of our employees. I think to have employees that's been here the longest of anybody and is third on the payroll is very unfair. So, I would hope that the next council meeting I come to, I can hear that something has been done to talk about this person's concerns.
Leroy, if it's the one I think you're talking about, the city's in the process of getting a salary structure study or whatever you call it, Ron. A wage study.
Wage classification and compensation study.
And that person in mind was told that his issue would be addressed once we determined, and once that study was completed. It's not that nothing happened, it's just nothing happened to his satisfaction. So, we're waiting for that salary structure study to come back to see where he fits in and after that, we'll address his issues.
Well, there's a lot more issues to this and that, I don't want to get into them tonight. Outside of the fact that, to me, if I had my way, this person would get a twenty percent raise tonight and be dealt with it later. And I realize that Cedar's going to holler legal things and all this stuff, so I am not going to bring that up. But I'm just saying, I think it's disrespectful when the union isn't helping our employees out and our head staff isn't helping our employees out. This employee that's been very loyal to us, been with us for years and something needs to be dealt with. Thank you.
Leroy, we will have a personnel committee meeting to get to the bottom of this and we need to set one up probably next meeting or before next meeting, Ron, so we can talk about it and...
Any idea when that study's going to be completed?
I have the draft now, so we'll meet as a personnel committee.
We'll look at it from there. Anything else? Just last week, last Wednesday, we had Congressman Jason Lewis come to town and myself, Ron, Dave Maroney, Scott Arneson from the county and Grace Isaacson from the county. And we all sat down and met with the congressman. He talked about what's been going on in Washington DC from his perspective. And then we were able to take him around and show him Cannon Falls. Took him out to Banks Outdoors. He got to see a little bit of what was going on out there. We came back and he met with Dave Olson out at Artisan Plaza to see what's going on out there. And we talked a little transportation and about the bridge and a little healthcare. And I think he would like to come back in the future and tell us what else is going on. But it was nice to have the congressman here last week and he'll help us out in any way that he can. So, that was one of the other meetings for last week. Other than that, I don't have anything else this evening. So, at this time, the chair will take a motion to adjourn the city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Cedar. Alls in favor? Opposed? Means adjourned. Take the fiber and then we'll start on the...
Thank you. Yeah, here we are again. Uh, so this clearly is our first budget workshop meeting. Typically what council has done is conducted this meeting, uh, tried to give staff some direction as to where you'd like to see the proposed levy set at the, in the middle of, uh, September. We have to submit our proposed levy to the state of Minnesota by the end of September, September thirtieth. Our second meeting in September would be September nineteenth, so we have tonight and, uh, likely the first meeting in September and then September nineteenth for the adoption. Typically what we do is we, we like to have direction prior to that nineteenth meeting, so our resolution is set. And if there are changes, they're, they're fairly minimal, but that's, well, time will tell on that. And then our final, uh, adoption meeting would be in December. We have to adopt our final levy by the end of December. The levy that, the final levy can't be any higher than your proposed levy, but it can be lower. Uh, one of the, uh, the items that really plays into setting your budget and your levy is the tax capacity from Goodview County. And we, we don't have that. We don't, we didn't receive it last year. I look back, I think it was September fourteenth. So hopefully we have it before we set our, uh, proposed levy because that, if our tax capacity increases quite a bit, that does give us a little bit of ability to, to perhaps budget a little more and keep our tax rate the same. Giving us the ability to either fund more operations or fund more capital. But, uh, in, in the information you have in front of you that was in your packet, there are two supplements. One, the Shepherd Center did submit a request, uh, did not specify a dollar amount that I see.